All right, this regular scheduled meeting in the St. Helens Board of Education will come to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? So move. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second. And the next item on the agenda is to approve the amendments from the last board meeting, which have been distributed beforehand. Do we have a motion to approve the amendments?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Freeman.
Members, I have very special guests today with us, several. And we want to start with introducing Mayor Curry joining us tonight. Thank you for being here, Mayor. Everybody knows that Mayor Curry had a couple of months ago inquired of me about the idea of doing something in honor of our very first superintendent of Vestavia Hills School, who had passed away recently. And so he's been working on this, and I want him to really take the lead, Mayor Curry, on this, and then we'll get everybody introduced up here. But thank you all for coming.
Well, thank you for having us. As a matter of fact, I'd like Mrs. Clark and any of the family, if y'all can stand up here and come on up front here. Let's get over to the room where we've got plenty of room. But yeah, I'd get Dr. Freeman to come join me, and Ms. Clark, if you'll stand right here. I want to read what we're presenting here. This is a joint effort from the city and the school board, and I'd like to read that "On behalf of the City of Vestavia Hills, it's with great pleasure that I present to the family of William T. Clark this certificate of appreciation for his leadership and dedication as the founding superintendent of the Vestavia Hills City School System. We are grateful for his service to both the students and to the community of Vestavia Hills. The mayor and city council, along with Superintendent Dr. Todd Freeman, and members of the Vestavia Hills Board of Education are honored to recognize his valuable contribution to the city of Vestavia Hills." And I'd like for you and your family to have this. I wanted to share a personal note with the group that I first met the Clarks. My Aunt Maggie is here. Get her away. And her husband, John Shelton, was among other things Superintendent of Schools in Troy, and went on and worked with the state in the disability determination area. But anyway, it was through Dr. Shelton that when I was running for office, he said, "Well, that's fine that you're going to run, but you need to meet Dr. Clark." So that's how I got introduced to y'all, and certainly want to recognize what he meant to the city. When he started it, Vestavia Schools were great, and they've continued to be great. So I hope that you can, you and the family can enjoy that, and we're just so appreciative of what he did for us.
Thank you.
All right.
I want you to introduce everybody who's here. We don't need to embarrass everybody. You can embarrass them. Go ahead.
All right. Um, all right. This is our son Ted Clark, our daughter Ellen Barry, her husband Steve Barry, our grandson Brett Barry, who came through Vestavia System.
All right.
As did these two. Our granddaughter Jenna Dietrich, our son, grandson-in-law Andrew Dietrich.
We're thrilled to have you here, and so glad you're here. One of the things, Ms. Clark, I know that is critical for superintendents is that they have a husband or wife that supports them unequivocally, and mine does, and I know that you do. And so what the Board of Education is doing is, because you were a music teacher at West for a period of time, is what, so what our Board of Education is doing is making purchases for our coral programs in your honor for what you've meant to our system as well. So we're thankful for your cooperation. Anybody else?
Whenever, actually, it's the room.
Oh, I'm done. Go ahead, Ben.
I would like, I would like to say that perhaps I'm the only one in this room that had the honor and privilege of working together and for Bill Clark. He was a wonderful human being. People don't realize what a difficult task Bill Clark undertook when he became our first superintendent in 1970. We formed our school system in April of 1970, and we hired Bill shortly thereafter, and he faced three hurdles that the ordinary person couldn't get over. One was, we had limited facilities. We had approximately 2,500 youngsters to educate, and we took over East and Posits by the process of osmosis, but we didn't have classrooms enough to take care of all the students, so we used the Civic Center, and we used the Vestavia Hills United Methodist Church. Bill made it work. Second obstacle was, the board was grossly underfunded. Interest rates at that time were in excess of 20%, and he made a little stretch a long, long way. And the last thing was that no sooner that we hired him, and we hadn't even opened the schoolhouse door yet, and we were brought into the desegregation case that was pending that started in 1965, and we had to prove to the federal court that we didn't organize the school system to avoid integration was the issue. And Bill guided us through that, and from a personal note, all Patrick Boone can say to William T. Clark is, "Thank you," because he is the one that came to me and said, "Pat, Bob Vance has become a United States Circuit Court of Appeals Judge. Would you take his place?" And I can tell you, I love to tell Judge Vance's son this, there isn't a human being or lawyer in the world that could take Bob Vance's place. And here I was, not even dry behind the ears, and Bill Clark came to me and said, "Patrick, we want to welcome you aboard," and that's been over 41 years ago. So thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank y'all. I tell Ms. Clark she knows how board meetings go, and she's welcome to stay, but you know, she knows how board meetings go. All right, our next honoree is one of our students from Liberty Park. I'd like to introduce her to you all, recognize her. Yep.
Amy Thompson. So we are so proud and excited that Amy Thompson's artwork was awarded the third place in the bicentennial art show, the state superintendent's art show in Montgomery. And as you can see, her artwork is on the screen for us, and we would very much like for you to tell us a little bit about your inspiration and your work. Can you say what you tell the great?
Hi, I'm Amy, and this is my artwork. I did a portrait of the Vulcan for the state bicentennial art show, and I used shading pencils to shade and draw the Vulcan, and I used paints and oil pastels to draw the background.
Excellent. And her teacher, Leonelle, would you please say anything come up here? It's here with us, too. And we're just so proud of the work that they've done together. This is Leonelle's first year as art teacher at East, and so what an accomplishment for both of you guys. And your parents are here, correct, and maybe some other family members, so great. A lot of other family. Of course, I want to be here. That's very exciting. Y'all just had an award ceremony, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Anything you want to tell us about where it's hanging down there in Montgomery? Is it in like a special space?
It's in the Capitol. It's in the Capitol. In there, in the old Supreme Court library.
Okay.
So if you want to see it, please go check it out, because she's an amazing artist.
Yes, very true. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
While Liberty Park would love to claim you, I think you can. Thank you, family, extended family, for being here to support Amy. That's fantastic. Okay, our next recognition, by the way, let me say this about the bicentennial. You know, this is our 200-year celebration in Alabama that Kahava Heights Elementary and West Elementary are participating in the bicentennial celebration. And so quickly, Cindy, a theme that's going on at East this year, no, I'm sorry, I'm getting all confused. The West. Where are my students? Tell us what you do in the West.
So this week, we're having a Celebrate Alabama Week, and we have guest readers coming in, some of our school board members, Dr. Freeman, Mayor Curry, and they're going to be reading this book called Alabama, My Home Sweet Home, to all the students. So we are having just a celebration of all the people and places in Alabama.
Yes, so we partnered with the Kava River Society, and at the beginning of the year, all of our fourth and fifth graders went to the Kava River and had field trips there. We just want to educate our kids on where they get their water from and biodiversity in the river. And then in the spring, we're having a cleanup day, so if anyone can come, be a hero with us. I'm a hero, I'm here to save the day. You're welcome to join us on April 7th, that's a Sunday afternoon, we're going to be out cleaning up around the river.
Good, thank y'all. Appreciate you doing that, too. Their banners are in front of the school, you can check those out. Nice prestigious honor to get to celebrate this year. Okay, our last recognition is from Vestavia Hills High School, and he's got a great name for a wrestler, a state champion wrestler, Pete Dazio. And wrestler. So Coach Adams is here with him. Coach, I'd like for you to come on up with Pete and just do a little bit of bragging about it, if you don't mind. He is our state champion. What's your weight class, Pete?
170.
170. All right, come on up. This is T. Adams. Wrestling guru. All right, tell us a bit about him.
Pete's my main man. I came in three years ago. Like I said, the first time I met Pete, hard worker, I gave him a task. Well, I didn't give him a task, I asked him a task, coded message. He said he wanted to be a varsity starter, and I told him that there was a weight class open, 140 pounds. I think he weighed about 165 at the time. And he asked me, "Do you want me to cut weight?" And I said, "I didn't say that. I just said there's one open." And so he made the choice then, I know we have a special candidate, he's three-time place winner, and four is a second, and then finished as a champion, that's senior.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Then you'll share with Pete.
A lot of your former teachers are in here, Pete.
Just glad to have.
Glad to have Coach Adams and Coach Pruitt and Coach Merrill and all those people that helped me through.
Do you have family with you, Tom?
Yes, sir, my parents.
All right. Congratulations, parents. This will be good, and I have some very impressive, congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll head into our financial statement at this time.
Good afternoon. In your board packet, you have the February 2019 financial statements to check, ready for review. I want to highlight a couple of things on the budget actual comparison report. As of March 2019, or February 2019, local revenues from property tax collections are at 82% compared to 88% at this time last year, and total expenditures compared to budget are in line with prior year 43%. And all board bank accounts have been reconciled as of February 28, 2019.
Well, members, I recommend that we approve the financial statement for February 2019.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions? So Courtney, you think the 82 and the 88 is just a timing issue?
It is, you know, we have, we kind of lagged the last couple of months with the property tax revenues, so I think we're finally almost getting caught up. So hopefully in March, I can report that we're, we've collected 100%, hopefully.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Item six, recommend that we approve consent items related to out-of-state overnight field trips and disposal of property.
So you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? So, and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Item seven, recommend the board approve budget amendment number one as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation around approving budget amendment number one, do we have a motion to approve? Second.
Second.
Questions, commentary?
Just to break forward.
So what this says is routine amendment that we do to adjust our fund balance to what we actually ended with as of September 30, 2018. This was as of our state-approved financial statement. So, you know, at the time I prepared the budget, I didn't know exactly how we were going to end up since it was in July, so it increased our fund balance a few million dollars, so that puts us well above our two-month required reserve.
So it's just a required notification to the state?
Right.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
We like those kind of budgets.
All right. Item D, I recommend the board approve change order number six with Blaylock Building Company Incorporated in the additional amount of $201,382 for renovations for the middle school package B, building addition and renovations.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Commentary, questions?
Yeah, one thing I'll note on this change order, I think we're getting closer to having fewer of these, but there is a significant amount of the 200,000, about 126,000, I believe, Brendan, that's tied to the roof on the mural building, and that's not the replacement of the roof, it's the structure underneath it. It's largely structural steel package, correct?
That's right. Any questions?
I get choked up just talking about the change order.
All in favor? I get choked up because of the pollen.
All right, item C, I recommend the board approve the low bid from Veering Construction Company LLC in the amount of $1,047,000 for new loop drive and parking for Vestavia Hills Elementary, Dolly Ridge.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? So move. Second.
Second.
Questions, commentary?
A little bit about what the new loop drive and parking entail.
We shared this, you can see here on this architectural rendering, we shared this back in January. Right now, the playground sits behind Current Gresham School, you can see that will turn into our loop road. Parking spots there in the middle of the loop where the playground now sits, 130 total spots in the rear of the building, and then another 49 spots there in front of where the playground is now. And so you'll loop around the back, run out to the front of the building, and then around the island.
So we added the parking for every parent event. I thought Dr. Aaron also said that every parent is guaranteed a parking place. Wait, he's not here, he's not here. He definitely said that. Exactly. Well, if every parent will have a designated spot just where their.
About 180 total.
180.
Yeah, that's right.
When's expected completion?
Project would be similar to Dolly Ridge last year, and start about. What did I say?
Can we pull the A off of there at this point? Motion to modify the agenda. Any other questions on that? All in favor?
All right. Next item, E, I recommend the board approve the contract with New York Construction Company LLC in the amount of $1,047,000 for new loop drive and parking for Vestavia Hills Elementary, Dolly Ridge.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? So move. Second.
Second.
No questions on this, since that's just a tie of the last. All in favor?
Aye. Okay, item E, I recommend the board approve the agreement for purchase and sale of real estate in the amount of $300,000 as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation on this, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Comments?
All right, I would like to show you what we've got planned.
Provide. Free air. Could we put pants on him?
All right, you can, you can see the property there. Let's see. The lower side there, right?
Yes, okay, thank you. You can see in the bottom right-hand corner, the space there for purchase. And what that will provide us with is with an additional, potentially an additional 76 parking spaces for that campus.
About two acres of property. Let's show my next one. This is not the full picture, but give you an idea of what it would look like. We have 180 spots that you approved on this last item. This would have added an additional 76, maybe a few more if need be. But just, just to give you a little bit of perspective on this, we did an alternate for the bid that you just approved a few moments ago on the island, which is where the buses surround, to develop that into parking. We could have developed 56 parking spaces, my correction, at a cost of $625,000. To develop this property with 76 parking spaces, we estimate to cost 450,000. So the development in itself is much less expensive. So the net, the difference in the purchase and the development of that, that would be 750,000 estimated versus developing that island at 6.5. It's about $1,000 less per parking space to do it. So I felt like it was a good property purchase for us to make, and there's due process that goes along with this, provided you approve the contract. It would take probably three months for all things to be done, but I would believe strategically it will be a good purchase for us and give us more parking as the needs of that school expand.
And if I recall, the terrain of that allows us to use of that big old pile of dirt we have to kind of get to fill it.
Yeah, thank you for saying that. We pulled off a very large amount of dirt off the site for the new building that's sitting on the football field in the back corner. We don't know exact quantities. I don't know if we've verified those yet, Sean, do we?
1,900.
Cub yards. 1,900 cubic yards is what Brendan said.
What in there it says we have on site, it would take about 2,600 cubic yards, so we still have to bring in about 700 cubic yards of fill material.
The gain for us is that Niren has to get the stuff off the site anyway, and so it's really a savings for us to use basically the dirt we need to fill it up.
That's good.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Item F, I recommend the board approve the contract with J.A. Dawson and Company Incorporated in the amount of $176,929.2 for the playground for Vestavia Hills Elementary, Dolly Ridge.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. We discussed this previously, it's moving that playground up to the front there, what this parking is going to be.
What parking level is next to the island?
Okay, that's a pretty sizable playground, too, I think, from what we discussed.
It's a, we used a lot of the Kava Heights model on a larger scale since we've got a larger number of kids. So good thing about that location is it's right near the walkway to the football field, just the connection.
Any questions?
It's a summer project as well.
That's good. All right, all in favor?
Aye. Item G, I recommend the board approve the bid from Williford Orman Construction LLC in the amount of $34,948 for modifications to visitor side bleachers for Vestavia Hills High School.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Scroll down for me if you would, please. You can see here what this will provide at the stadium on the visitor's side is ADA accessible spaces there for attendance to come where they come to the stadium. You can see the elevation there as well. It's my understanding this has been requested a couple of times, and this will allow us to have that seating there.
Very good. It's not a project that is required, it is one I think that is important to do for sure, and I appreciate the work on that.
Does this include the option to make the seats very uncomfortable for any player? Not so much. Any questions on this? Mr. Hoover's not laughing. Were you or were you not Mr. Hoover? You can either confirm or deny.
He's going with the pages.
That's right, that's right. Where's that paycheck come from? Any other questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, I recommend the board approve the contract with Williford Orman Construction in the amount of $134,948 for modification to visitor side bleachers for Vestavia Hills High School.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Just the contract for the last.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, based on the legal advice of our attorney, Mr. Boone, I recommend the board authorize me as superintendent to enter into an amendment to the contract by and between the City of Vestavia Hills, Alabama and Specialty Turf Supply Incorporated for lawn maintenance services through September 30, 2020.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We plan to bring all lawn maintenance work around the system to the board after bid here in April. This allows us to do all of the athletic spaces under a shared agreement with the city with SDS, and I'm highly recommended.
I'll get you my address after the meeting.
Put some bleachers up front.
Anything else, Kelly?
All in favor?
Item J, I recommend the board approve the owner-architect agreement with Lathan Associates Architects, P.C., and the board in the amount of, in the contract amount of 2.8 million dollars for renovations for a new middle school package E softball and baseball complex as submitted. That 2.8, just so you know, is the budget for the project, not what we're going to pay. He just left.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? So move. Second.
Second.
These are the ball fields at the back of Berry.
This is baseball and softball. We, you've shown me these rankings before, but we would anticipate starting the project in the fall, and hopefully the timing works similar to when the whole project is completed, and we'll have two fields. The city is losing two fields here at Wal Park because of the work that they're doing. The game goes back at Berry.
Excellent. Any questions from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oh, this was me. Oh, okay, sorry about that.
I like the motive.
Did you like that, though? So commentary before this is that, you know, I had a discussion with a couple of the board members, and each one of them individually, and that, you know, we think Dr. Freeman's been doing a really great job for us. And so he's been here a year.
All right.
Year.
One year.
One year on those. And so we wanted to go and extend his contract to show, A, our appreciation of what he has done for us, and then B, just to firm up our commitment to him as our, as our superintendent. So we wanted to put another year on the back end of that, and publicly, I want to say that we appreciate you, and you're doing a great job, and we feel that you're leading us well, and that we have strong levels of direction and transparency and all those things. So we appreciate what you're doing, and I know this is for your personality type, this is very uncomfortable for you to have people. I do not like to say anything. But we, we all did it. So in, in the community, I hear great things, amongst us, we hear great things, and the staff in general, so thank you for that. And Mr. Boone has prepared the documents that we can execute after we vote on this, but I guess I bring the motion in this case, Mr. Boone?
Yes, you can make it.
I can make it, so I would like.
You need to relinquish the gavel to Mr. Dent, of course.
Oh, or he can make it. We really don't want that. Mr. Dent, why don't you make the record like Bolton over there? By the way, by the way, Mr. Dent only has like a couple of meetings left, so we'll make a recommendation.
Ten years to life. I would like to make a recommendation that we extend the superintendent's employment con. I would like to make a recommendation that we extend the superintendent's employment contract of Dr. Freeman. Do I have a motion?
Second?
That's how many years?
It's, so it was three, one is out, so we're putting a three back on, back on the end. I was told there'd be no math.
If we keep talking about it, he'll keep turning more red.
That's right. So before we vote, would any of y'all like to, do y'all have any commentary you'd like to further his embarrassment on this?
Well, he's got family around the corner. You want to introduce him?
Anything? All good?
No, because I like him, and I know it's embarrassing.
You'd be in the same boat, Karen.
That's right.
All right, all in favor?
Appreciate that.
Yeah, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Rachel and the boys are thrilled, as am I, and they have really encouraged me not to mess it up. Thank you all so much. All right, item eight, I would recommend the board approve personnel actions as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation on personnel, do we have a motion to approve? Second? Any questions, commentary?
All good?
All in favor?
I would like to say without just mentioning names with regards to the personnel, we have approved a series of, a lot of transfers with our K5 configuration tonight, and I've had a team that's worked on that. I'm going to allow them just to stay anonymous, but they have worked diligently for several months to put together what I think are the comparable stats that we provide excellent instruction at all of our elementary schools next year, and so it's just an outstanding job that has been done, and not every employee got the first choice that they had. 87% did. I felt very good about that, but in the end, we've got great staffs at all of their schools, and I feel good about that. And we also approved tonight a new director of personnel services who's in our office with, who's in our meeting with us somewhere, Meredith Hansen. There she is. Meredith, welcome, effective July 1. And we have a prestigious group of teacher leaders that joined us tonight. They had, were, started their class last week, new teacher leaders, and were required to attend one meeting before they end, and that's what, a year or two that they do? And so these are studious members of the team that are here at the first meeting after their first class.
He's the star student. I was on a video talking about.
You were?
I won't be here much longer, so congratulations.
It's good to see you all in person.
Representative Wheeler, thank you for joining us, Wes.
All right, so we've come to the time of public comment. If anyone has any commentary they'd like to offer, please leave your comments to the agenda house only, state your name and address. If there being none, this meeting is adjourned.